So if you'd all rise, Councilman Hensley is going to do a prayer and then Mr. Fanning will do the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, teach us to be generous, teach us to serve our neighbors as they require, to give of ourselves and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heed the wounds, to toil and not to seek for rest, to labor and not to ask for reward, except to know that we are applying our best judgment and efforts to the betterment of our community. And we pray for our neighbors who work to secure and protect our public safety, who put themselves between danger and the rest of us, day and night. We are grateful for them and for all that they do to keep us safe. And for all of the unspoken intentions and prayers of those assembled tonight, we say, amen.
Amen.
All diligence to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the first meeting of 2024. Your roll call votes.
Allers.
Present.
Deacon.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Lester.
Here.
Mealy.
Present.
Schwartz.
Present.
Wiseman.
Present.
Wright.
Here.
All right, we're going to alter process just very quickly. We have some special guests with us. This is Landwear, brought three very important people in our community, so we're going to let him introduce himself and equally as a member.
Mayor and councilors, yeah, thanks for having us. My name's Eric Landwear. I'm the scout master for Troop Six in Jefferson City at the Macaulay-Conception School. And we have three scouts with us today working on different mayor badges. We have Mason Kaiser and David Kaiholtz working on citizenship in the community. And then my son Zachary Landwear, he's working on the communications mayor badge. So the great thing about these mayor badges is they get to come to a public meeting and witness citizenship in action. So they're here to watch a few items and then hopefully have a conversation afterwards. So thanks for having us.
You guys have anything you want to say?
No.
Thanks for being here. We'll try to make it an interesting meeting, hopefully not exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, though. Again, welcome to 2024. We've got a lot ahead of us this year, so we appreciate you joining with us tonight. That'll take us back to the agenda, item three, adoption of the agenda.
Selman.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Don't think we have any miscellaneous agenda items. No public hearings tonight, no appointments tonight, presentation from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Ms. Perry, financial update.
Mr. Mayor, what you have in your packet is what was presented to the finance committee at the end of December. The first report that you'll come to is the sales tax revenues, and this would finish out the year of revenues for sales tax for fiscal year '23. The final period in the general sales tax, the collections were $1,242,324, which was almost $19,000 under projection, but through the course of the fiscal year, the collections over the budget is $514,398. That same trend holds true for the remainder of the taxes as well. All of them, for the most part, came in under projections. But overall, for the fiscal year, the capital improvement tax is $68,342 over the budget. The parks sales tax is $718,341 over the projected annual budget. And the public safety tax is $15,990 over the year of the projected budget. The next four pages are actually just individual detail on those particular sales tax items. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that report, if there are any.
Okay.
Next report is the revenue model. Again, this is to finish out fiscal year 2023. If you look at the revenue model summary page, the projected over-budget, collections over-budget for fiscal year '23, $1,879,787. You will see on the very first line there in yellow, the sales and use tax, there's the $514,000 that we talked about on the sales tax report previously. I do want to again call attention to that bottom-line number, that is actual collections over-budgeted revenue. If you go to the second page of this report, one of the other things to call attention to is in the other taxes category, the marijuana tax. We did collect tax. That would have been for the collection period of October, but was reported to us in December. So on the marijuana tax in December, we collected $20,365. Important to note, we estimated '24 based on just projections, not really knowing what collections we're going to come in at. The projections that we have for marijuana tax would be under what the calculation would be using this $20,000 as an annual revenue.
Can I ask a quick question regarding marijuana? So now that we kind of have a little bit clearer picture, and really, your projections are pretty close, are you going to kind of use that now as a baseline more going forward, pretty much, or?
As we go into future fiscal years, we will actually have a little more collection data to use, so that may help us with being more honed in on a number. But for now, with this being the very first month of tax receipts we've received, we are in the ballpark for what we've projected for '24, and we'll continue to use those numbers to feed into future fiscal years.
Well, again, I think you did a good job, staff, making those projections. Thank you.
That's really all I'd like to call attention to on the revenue model, unless anyone has any other questions. The last report is the estimated fund balance. So this is a report that we have been modifying and updating as we've gone along. There are very few changes on this report for reflections in the FY '23 fiscal year, but I do want to call attention to the yellow highlighted item that says pending potential supplemental for self-funded health insurance, because this is the fund balance report for the general fund only. Later in the council meeting tonight, we will introduce a supplemental appropriation for self-funded health insurance. This is the portion that I would anticipate is going to be for the general fund only. So we're taking that amount of money out of the fund balance projections at $1.75 million. And I do also want to then add the two lines that are highlighted in orange. As we progress through the fiscal year, we don't necessarily talk about any of the unexpended budget amounts that will roll back to the fiscal year fund balance, and we also don't really talk about revenues over collections in terms of how they increase our fund balance. These two lines are intended to reflect that, to give council a fairly close depiction of what we anticipate the fund balance will be once the FY '23 financial statements are audited. The unexpended after fiscal year cleanup, again, this is for general fund only, is just over $875,000. During budget, we did talk, Chief Schofield and I specifically talked about attempting to maintain any unspent budget authority once we got to the end of the year to try and increase the fund balance. And staff has made a very specific effort to do this. That $875,000 is what is remaining after we clean up the things that we knew we were going to have some issues with. So those are unexpended funds after the cleanup. And then here's that figure from the revenue model, the $1,879,000, that's what we are showing on the revenue model as over-collected versus our budget. So in total, after those things are taken into account, that leaves an estimated fund balance of 18.2%. I do want to point out that this will not be final until the financial statements are audited. That number could potentially change slightly, but the point of this is to give a decent indicator to council that, as Chief Schofield and I discussed during budget meetings, that we were going to try our best to get back to that 17% fund balance that's required within the financial statement policies. And the only way this could have been accomplished is with all of the departments doing their part to make an effort to keep the expenditures at a minimum for this fiscal year.
Questions or comments?
This did pass through the finance committee in the same format, so that's why we've added these things here and brought them to council as well, especially since we'll be talking about a supplemental appropriation further in the council meeting.
All right, great job. Appreciate all the hard work by staff to sharpen the pencil and finance committee for your oversight over the past years. We appreciate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hensley.
Sorry, I really just can't say enough about Ms. Perry's leadership here and the leadership of other members of staff in seeing this through sort of these overlapping issues with respect to the fund balance and with respect to the self-insurance issue that'll come up later. It was an enormous challenge, and all of the credit rightfully goes to their leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that will take us to announcements. Admin Committee.
We will not be having a meeting this month, and so our next scheduled meeting is for February.
Finance?
Our next scheduled meeting is currently set for 7:30 a.m. on the 18th of January, but I think time and/or the day is subject to change at this point, so stay tuned.
Public Safety, Councilman Spencer.
Our next meeting will be January 25th. Trainee Room, 7:30.
And Public Works, Councilman Spencer.
Our next meeting will be next week, January 11th, at 7:00. No changes.
Any other, Councilman Spencer?
Yes, I just wanted to share and acknowledge that our Jefferson City Symphony Orchestra are celebrating their 100 years, and their next performance will be a night at the zoo on February 13th at 6:30 at Mitchell Auditorium on the LU campus. It's a great, great event, a great group of folks who are very talented in this community. What I really appreciate about the group is that they encourage our young high school students within the community to come and participate, along with a lot of talented musicians. And I got to witness their Christmas program that was done in November, and I was just blown away with the talent of the community. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Repeat the debate in time.
Their next performance will be February 13th at 6:30 at Mitchell Auditorium.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, item B, yard waste update. Mr. Smith, you spent a little bit of time on this issue.
Yes, we have. So this one will not be quite as long as some of our other conversations, but I did want to offer a reminder that our temporary yard waste service location, we'll be winding down this week. So January 7th is the scheduled end date for that facility, at which point it will close for the season. We are also have wrapped up the new RFP, and that will be released tomorrow for solicitation of bids to operate a more permanent yard waste facility. So we look forward to getting bids for that process here in the coming weeks. And once we process those, we'll have something to counsel, to consider, hopefully as quick as possible. Depending on some of the bids, I would state that depending on if zoning is needed, that could make it a little bit longer than we'd like, but otherwise, we'll try to turn this around as quickly as we can, so we have something ready to go for residents at the point in time that we need to have something available for yard waste services again. Happy to answer any questions. And I would say that if you were aware of someone who would like to receive that information, we could send that. We have sent that out to a list of kind of contractors we're aware of that might be interested in, but if you have someone in mind who would like to send that to me, I can further that on or pass it along so they get that information too as soon as possible.
Well, again, I know there's been a lot of hands involved in this project. Thank you very much for your leadership on it and others in this room that have been very engaged and active in it. I think we have met the commitment to the community, so.
Thanks.
Because of your hard work. All right, I don't see anything else. Item nine, we don't have any presentation from the gallery. Item 10, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, item 11A, 2023-072, bills in.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2022-2023 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds from the general fund, parks fund, airport fund, parking fund, transit fund, and wastewater fund to the self-funded health insurance fund.
Like the Ms. Perry on health insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2.4 million. That is currently the amount that the self-funded health insurance is negative. I have attached on the Exhibit A a breakdown of what those particular amounts would be for each fund. This includes the general fund and the parks fund, plus all four enterprise funds. This is different than what has happened in the past for airport and transit, because those two funds are subsidized by the general fund. We have typically not been able to utilize part of their fund balance to cover the shortage. I have reviewed the financial reports as they stand right now, and I do feel like the two enterprise funds that we subsidize can contribute to this particular shortage. So that's what I have put forth in this Exhibit A. Exhibit B that is attached is a document that went to the finance committee. It has three potential options for how this shortage could be allocated. The first is covered employees, and it's just that. The employees does not include any dependents. The second method is covered lives, which would include all employees and their dependents. And the third would be a breakdown of the shortage based on claims usage for 2023. Finance committee reviewed these. Their recommendation was to base it on covered employees, which is what we've done in the past, so that's what you have before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. And Ms. Perry, just to clarify, this is to balance out this item for fiscal year '23 that ended October 31, correct?
That is correct. This would be an FY '23 supplemental appropriation, so that finishing the books in FY '23 would not show a negative balance in the self-funded health insurance fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, 2023-073.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 0.24 acres of land addressed as six O to Ellis Boulevard from CO Office Commercial to NO Neighborhood Office.
To you, Mr. Smith.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do have a very short presentation for this. So this is a rezoning, as was stated. The current property is owned CO, which is Office Commercial. The proposal is to rezone to NO, which is Neighborhood Office. The major distinction there is that Neighborhood Office would allow the property to be used as a single-family residential property. If you've been by that, you'll notice that the building form there really is, it was constructed as a single-family home. In the past, it was rezoned to the CO to allow it to be used for commercial office purposes. As you can see here, that property there on the south side of Ellis, just west of Tanner Bridge Road, kind of operates in that space, that's a transition area between single-family homes along Ellis, and then a C1 commercial district on the west. So it really is the big double kind of transitional use type property. The NO would allow it then to be used for some kind of lower-level office uses, while then also being able to be used potentially for a single-family, which is far and standing what the current owners would like to pursue, or have the ability to do that in the future. This is a closed-up area of the property. You can see the property to the west has that CO zoning as well, so really going from CO to NO, then to single-family is a good transition of zoning for this location. Staff had reviewed this and recommended approval, planning zoning, and reviewed it, and also recommended approval with vote in favor of eight to nothing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Councilman Spencer.
I attended that of the planning zoning meeting when this was reduced, or voted on, I should say. And there was some question or maybe even concern of how we could maybe streamline this. If this was originally a residential structure, you know, initially, when it was first designed and built, how come we couldn't go back to that, to its original designation, you know, having to come back in front of planning and zoning? I mean, is there any way we could streamline this process at all to where?
I can take that no. The process is outlined by state law, which has to be followed. It's mandatory in any actions taken in violation or not consistent with those procedures are held void. So it is, seems a little silly, but that's the process that's mandated by state law.
I would say that zoning district NO is really kind of meant that niche where individual property owners could utilize it for some commercial purposes, but still have that ability to use it as single-family without proactively using it on other properties. Really, the process is to come back and rezone it. If appropriate, to NO might be suitable.
I think some of that was in regard to the balance of home-based businesses, you know, before they were kind of coming online and invoked, so to speak. So maybe that's something we just need to talk with our legislative representatives about, and if there's an appetite to streamline that. Thank you very much. Appreciate your answer, boy.
Any other questions? All right, takes us to 2023-074.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Ridgecrest subdivision, section four, the subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, so as had stated, this is a new final subdivision of a property that's been developed in phases over the years. So this would be Phase Four of Ridgecrest subdivision. The final plat would create 21 multifamily lots. From our conversations with developers, I think the intent there is duplexes and triplexes. So with 21 lots, you could expect 40 to 50 new dwelling units for this site. It is going to require the extension of some new public infrastructure, mainly for Portobello Place Drive through the site, and would connect then to Stadium Boulevard. Planning and zoning did review the case, and they did vote eight to zero in favor of the project, and I would be happy to answer any other questions. We've got a shot of the final subdivision plat as well.
All right, don't see any questions for you.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to item 12, bills pending. 2023-069 has been withdrawn.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, correcting references to Chapter 32 of the city code contained within Appendix Y, amending Chapter 32, Section 222 of the city code to include a reference to Appendix Y.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This bill, as Clerk stated, is what we would term as kind of a cleanup bill. A few months ago, Chapter 32 was modified extensively, was changed section numbers, but unfortunately, at the time, it was not realized that Appendix Y referenced those section numbers. So this bill is simply cleaning that up and ensuring that Appendix Y is referencing the appropriate sections. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, same on.
Yes.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Substitute is substituted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.[1742.82]
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, so you now have the substitute bill on the table. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call vote.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon? Bill passes as substituted.
All right. Nothing on the informal calendar. Resolutions, Resolution 2023-0.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a special exception use permit to expand a solid waste disposal facility for property located at 5605 Monroe River Access Road.
Mr. Smith.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, tonight is a special exception request. And just real quick, before I forget, it is a resolution, but there will be a second reading at the January 16 meeting, which would be a public hearing, which is a little unusual for resolutions. But this is a special exception resolution. And just a quick overview. So a special exception is required for the operation and in this case, the expansion of landfill services in M1 Industrial District. So that is the request for this special exception permit would allow the expansion of the current land use site, really east of their current footprint to allow kind of the expansion and then the continued use of this site into the future. As you can see, this is the currently existing site north side of Monroe River Access Road, west side Shamrock Road and also north of Highway 1563. You see more in the center of the aerial there is the current operation, kind of north central. The expansion, as you'll see here in a second, will really be a little more to the east, close to the eastern property line with North Shamrock Road. Again, this is a little bit closer view. I can see kind of the current areas of operation. The expansion area, which would be approximately additional 15.2 acres, would allow the continuation of the site, per the applicant's information, till approximately 2045. Right now, I think there's a window of maybe 10 additional years for the site without that special exception permit that would allow the expansion of that site. So part of the valuation of this and really a lot of the review and recommendation is based on some of the requirements for a landfill, which is additional screening of that site. So as you can see here, they're going to be moving a little bit closer to Shamrock, I think within 200 feet to Shamrock Road. That is going to require basically a landscaping berm and landscaped area and along with a fence. So again, in the far left, you can see the expansion area, approximately the 15 acres. It's a little hard to make out, but along the right side and then the couple strips of illustration there, you'll see basically kind of a aerial overview of where the location of the landscaping buffer yard would be. Would be a small berm associated with that. The landscaping would also be elevated from the level of the road. So it gives it actually even additional height above and beyond what the berm is going to provide. So this is going to provide kind of that visual screen going into the future for motorists traveling along Shamrock and for additional property owners on the east side of Shamrock as well. We'll take a little time to fill in. Top illustration there is kind of early vegetation growth. On the bottom, what you could expect to see within a few years, maybe 10 years or so, start to fill in some of that. A lot of the growth is shown as kind of staggered evergreens and deciduous, so it provides a nice variety of a buffer. They also provide kind of a sightline graphic there on the top, which kind of allows you to see a little bit of what the view of the facility would be. So again, this is a special exception. So planning and zoning did review this request and they did vote, in addition, eight, nothing, to recommend approval of the special exception to city council. This will come back for a public hearing, begin on January 16. I do believe applicants are in the audience tonight. If there are questions, I did inform them that they will be coming back for January 16, so they'll be available for questions and perhaps a short presentation at that time. But if there are questions that would likely be asked tonight, I know they're available as well. With that being said, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Deacon?
First of all, I'm really impressed with your operation. From the time you're all down on Dix Road, I don't know if you're old enough to know that, to the drivers here on the east end and the lady down at the scales. Because the question I've always had is?
Come on.
Yeah. Thanks.
Nothing to do. Why are we charged by weight and not by volume? A large pickup load of mattresses is going to take up more space than a small carload. I just never understood.
It's just kind of the industry standard. It's always been. It's always been by tonnage versus volume over the course of the industry, really.
Yeah, you're dealing with volume is your biggest enemy. All right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So.
How's that government?
Yeah. Just for the record, I'm Craig Abbott. I'm the environmental manager over Republic Services. So kind of just in a nutshell, the reason we're here, the landfill was permitted in about 1979, started with about nine and a half million cubic yards of airspace. We're down to about 1.5 million left. So about seven years, our landfill would be full. So it's like a five-year project to get it through the permitting process with Department of Natural Resources. So that's kind of why we're in front of you today. Essentially, as you drive down through, down Shamrock Road, it's essentially, if you could just envision that, coming a little bit closer to Shamrock, a little bit of change in elevation, but not much. So that's why we're here. Thank you.
Any other, Councilman Mills?
Thank you. So you don't have any state approval on the expansion yet? We do not yet. When do you expect that? We will be submitting. Do you want to talk to me about that?
You can just identify yourself. Yes, Adam?
I'm Michelle Clark. I'm a consulting firm. I work for Weber Consultants Group for Republic Services. The state permitting process is five years. The first portion of it is doing the hydrogeologic study, which we're about a year and a half into that. Once we wrap that up, we actually will develop the engineering design of it. So what we're showing is the maximum. But so, we're about a year and a half in. It'll be at least another three and a half years. So at this point, we have not submitted a design to DNR.
So in middle of the year 2024, we'll submit our findings of the geological study to the Division of Geological Survey, which is the Department of Natural Resources Group down in Rollup. They will review that. They will approve it. If, when they approve it, then it goes up to the solid waste management program and that's where we start getting into the design component of it and then they, the permit is acquired at that time.
So currently, we're still working through the signing component of it as well as obviously this, so.
All right. Well, thank you. I might have a piggyback question then for you, Ryan. Is it typical for a municipality to have a resolution or a bill or whatever it may be on an activity like this that is years away from fruition? Like, what's the purpose for that timeframe?
Yeah, so essentially what, and not to speak for the Republic Services, zoning is kind of one of those base requirements. And if they can't get the zoning through, then the entire state processing is kind of moot. And so because it's a question that has to be answered and it's one of the cheaper and easier answers that can be gotten, it makes sense a lot of times for people to kind of go through this process, get what they need at this process so then they can make the determination whether or not to make the time and resource investment to go through the leaner and more expensive state permitting process.
It's really, for us, it's like a blessing to move on. You know, like you've mentioned, if the planning and zoning, if the city took the position that, you know, they would not allow that, then that drives our business decision, you know, that it wouldn't happen, so. No, I appreciate you going through that. I wasn't thinking about that box that you all would check with. It really is, and it, yeah, it's unfortunate that we have to sit here, you know, four years in front of you, but with that, you know, with that timeframe and having to do work every year, that's essentially life. So, and it would give approximately 15 years of additional life. So we have about seven years left with what's currently permitted. This would add on another roughly 15 years, pending no catastrophic natural tornadoes that would add the tonnage that would fill it up faster.
It all comes back to volume.
It really all comes back to volume. So, thank you all.
Thank you. All right. There's no action required tonight. This will come back for a public hearing at our next meeting. Seeing no other questions, we'll go on to Resolution 2023-41.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting policies and procedures for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Smith?
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So what we're asking for tonight, approval of resolution is to basically adopt the policies and procedures for our 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program. From time to time, occasionally, we do receive review by HUD and they identified a few things within our policy procedure manual that need to be updated or revised. So we're bringing together or bringing forward a couple of things that we want to get done immediately. We may have some additional things as we go along. A couple of revisions that we're looking to make right now is some changes to lead-based paint requirements. HUD does require lead-based paint inspections. And in the vein of that, we've actually had our property maintenance supervisor get certified by the state of Missouri to be a lead-based paint inspector. So that's going to help with facilitation of that requirement. Pretty excited about him being able to do that and actually be able to fill that role. The other is to provide housing counseling. So that is something we'll be moving forward with for providing housing counseling for those that are looking to take advantage of our HUD programs, specifically the assistance with down payment. And just to kind of put that out there, this coming Monday, actually,